Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Confluence Cast presented by Columbus Underground. We are a weekly Columbus-centric podcast focusing on the civics, lifestyle, entertainment, and people of our city. I'm your host, Tim Fulton. This week, in anticipation of this fall's election, the Confluence Cast is endeavoring to introduce Columbus voters to the 12 council and two mayoral candidates in their own words. In this first interview, Council President Shannon Hardin sat down to discuss the state of council today, what successes and regrets he is reflecting on, and his vision for what's next in Columbus. You can get more information on what we discussed today in the show notes for this episode at theconfluencecast.com. Enjoy the interview. Sitting down here with Columbus City Council President Shannon Hardin. Shannon, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Good. I should also note that you are the unopposed Columbus City Council candidate for District Nine.
Yes.
So that's the occasion for us being here today. This is actually the, in terms of releasing them, this will be the final interview that folks have the opportunity to listen to, so I hope they've stuck around through Districts one through eight. You and I spoke last year, I will link in the show notes, that interview where you get into your background heavily, talk about some of your philosophies about leading, and I think we're going to talk about some of that stuff again today. But I guess what I want to hear about first is talk about your time on council. How long, and I apologize for not knowing this, how long have you been seated?
So I've been on council, uh, the nine years in October.
Okay.
I was appointed October, uh, sixth, I believe.
Okay.
Of 2014.
Okay.
And I've been council president now for six years. Uh, became council president January of 2018.
How's your time been?
Uh, depends on the day.
Okay.
You know, I've been very grateful, uh, that the residents of Columbus have entrusted me with the responsibility, and I really do believe it's an awesome responsibility to, um, help lead this community. Um, lead it in the mundane way of the making sure streets are paved, making sure that folks are picking up trash, um, making sure that we are working to be the safest city, um, that we can be. Um, but also in the larger, um, way of providing vision, uh, and helping us get to, um, where we all know we are going. I think about the different types of leaders and like Mayor Coleman, uh, was a mayor that got us away from calling ourselves Cowtown.
Uh huh.
Uh, and brought in, injected this idea of that we should have swagger. And swagger's like such an old word now, but like it worked for us as a community, gave us a bit of a confidence. And, you know, to see, you know, current leadership who has gotten us through, you know, uh, probably, I hope, um, um, the most challenging historical moments of our life, of our generation's life.
We hope so.
We hope, let's knock on wood. I mean, um, very necessary, but also very painful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, but we're still here. And so I start to think about the next.
Okay.
And like, like where then does Columbus go from here? And what does it need in terms of its leadership? And those are the things that get me excited truly about my role now, about the work that I do each and every day, and about this city and its future.
Talk about successes you're proud of. You know, the other side of this coin is coming, but what successes over the past nine years are you proud of?
You know, truthfully, it has happened the last year and a half.
Okay.
Um, wow. So a couple of years ago, uh, my, one of my former aides, Zach Davidson, brought to me this idea, uh, around, um, uh, doing something that was demonstrably for everybody. You know, we had been on the heels of, well, long ago, we, um, literally dug up a river and created a vibrant riverfront and created all this park space, millions and millions of dollars that we did that. Then, you know, fast forward and we, uh, saved the crew and built an arena, millions and millions of dollars. We did that. And folks are excited about these things, but the truth is, that does not granularly touch everybody individually, and especially not the folks who need something out of their government, need to be connected, need to feel like the successes that they are seeing have real impact on their individual lives. And so he brought this idea that we have to do something for everybody.
Okay.
He had seen, uh, Promise programs around the country. The Promise program is a simple commitment that if you do X, um, that you get Y. You get to go to college for free. Uh, in our situation, we realized that Columbus was under credentialing, undergraduating, um, a historic amount of folks. We were not keeping up with pace. I think the, the stat was that we needed 60% of our population credentialed by nine, by 20.
And when you say credentials, are you talking about just a high school diploma?
Uh, more than.
More than that. Okay.
Two years, some type of specialty degree, apprenticeship, trade, some type of, uh, credential that'll allow them to go a step further.
Got it.
Into the mark, into the job market. We were not hitting the mark by a lot. The pandemic hit and then we fell even further behind. Uh, we started working on this idea of a Columbus Promise program pre-pandemic. And truthfully, when the pandemic hit, we dropped it.
Okay.
Uh, everything's became more important, just keeping people fed and roofs over their head.
Right.
Uh, halfway through the pandemic, uh, the president of Columbus State, who had talked about this idea with, called me and said, if you thought we needed a Columbus Promise, uh, before the pandemic, you should see what our numbers are doing right now. Folks are not going to school. They're not applying for the FASPA. Uh, and if, and if we thought we had a workforce issue in 2019, in 2022 or 23, when we come out of this, we will be in much worse shape. And so we rallied, uh, in 2020 and 2021, worked with Columbus State, worked with Columbus City Schools, worked with the private sector, um, and create, and worked with I Know I Can, who really was the secret sauce because they were already in our schools. We created a program, probably in about eight months of real work, um, that, uh, invested $5 million from the city of Columbus, raised another five-ish from the private sector. Columbus State put in a million point five, and we were able to say that anybody that was graduating from Columbus City Schools would go to Columbus State for free. And they wouldn't just go to state for, uh, go to Columbus State for free, that we would give them a thousand dollar stipend so that they could stay in school. Because we know that the number one reason that folks, uh, fall out of school is not tuition, is because their car breaks down, or they fall behind in, in, um, in rent. And so, uh, we have that program off the ground. Uh, the first year, uh, there were, uh, seven hundred or so.
Okay.
Uh, students that participated.
Not a small number.
Not a small number.
Yeah.
Uh, we just, uh, sent through the, the second cohort that will start in August, and we're about 700 again.
Okay.
So to this point, you know, 1,400 young people from Columbus City Schools that live in Columbus have, have an opportunity, or taking, not an opportunity, are taking advantage of free college in their degrees that they want. And they are, they are having the stipends to stay in school. And the thing that knocks me off my feet right now, and it does happen once a week, um, is either a grandma in Krogers.
Okay.
Or a young person, uh, will stop me and say, hey, I'm, I'm going to the Columbus Promise and I'm going to school for free. And, uh, it makes me instantly emotional.
Okay.
Uh, because it's real impact, singularly granular for everybody.
Let's flip the coin.
Yeah.
Talk about things you're maybe not so proud of, or things that you don't, haven't been able to accomplish yet.
Yeah. I mean, when you've been in office for nine years, for, for almost a decade, that's crazy.
That, yeah.
Um, you, you, you learn. You, you learn. And, um, and I saw, I've learned. Um, one of the things, and it was early on in my career as elected official, um, uh, actually, I think it was under the former mayor, my mentor.
Okay.
Um, uh, there was a Somali, uh, young lady who was going through our police department, our, our police academy. And she got all the way through and, uh, they, towards the end, they asked her that she, or told her that she would not be able to serve with her hijab on. And, um, when I heard that, I knew instantly that that was wrong.
Right.
Um, I knew how wrong it was, like sickening wrong. Um, and because I was a newer council member, um, I didn't say anything.
Okay.
And, uh, didn't say anything really to anyone how sickening it made me.
You may have discussed it with friends, but you certainly didn't make a public statement.
Or a public, you know, action of it. And, um, it was, it was that that made me, that really haunted me for so long. That not, not the act that we as a, as an institution or as a government would get something wrong, but it, that me as the elected individual felt something, uh, for someone who needed people to stand up and speak up, did not stand up and speak up. That haunted me for, for a long time. And, um, so I was proud, I was proud and happy. Um, several years later, when, uh, actually, it was under this new police chief. So it was much later, last year, I think.
Okay.
Where we officially changed policy, um, to allow, um, um, folks to wear their traditional attire and be an active police officer.
Okay. Any other failures you wanna?
Oh, I have several.
Well, I see. I mean, so I do want to note, I, I've seen the pivot that you've made in terms of speaking out.
Yeah.
Right? The, the statement from Council President Harden is a common email subject line I get.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, and that is, uh, the bully pulpit that you have, right? That you, it's, these are statements you can put out as an individual. These are also statements that you can elicit or solicit from your fellow council members.
Um, that's true.
Pivot a little bit and talk about what sort of what change you've seen. Obviously, there's a different mayor than when you first came in. Uh, it was Coleman and now Ginther. Do you see the dynamics changed a little bit now between, for everyone in City Hall, uh, how are things different? Maybe not necessarily under different administrations, but externally, I've certainly seen, uh, the relationship between council and the mayor's office change a bit.
Yeah. I think that, you know, we are elected to do a job.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, two things. So one of the things that I try to protect now as leader of this body, um, is, um, the ability to, um, have different opinions, come from different places, but, but viscerally, like in our bones, still like in respect and care for one another.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is something that I put over individual policy every day, that, that need to be, um, uh, to have some camaraderie ship, or to, to be a unit, to care together, to be a Columbus thing that, that in, in, in general believes in the same thing. I would rather have a unified council, big picture in terms of values, not, not in beliefs, maybe not in action.
Right.
Uh, not in action at all. I have more split votes than any council president.
Well, and let's note a couple, some historical context, right? First of all, we're recording this the day after a three, four vote.
Yes.
Uh, on some additional monies to go toward the build out of the North Market.
Yes.
Uh, I think, you know, the, the folks voting in favor may have been, uh, interviewed, but the quotes were from the folks who were voting no.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, and so the historical context there is it, in the old days, things would not be brought up to a vote if they weren't going to get a unanimous.
Right.
Vote.
Right.
Uh.
Before I was council president, so it was only three years, uh, I took one no vote.
Okay.
And we have a no vote probably about once a week now.
Okay.
Like every council meeting.
Okay. And it, cause it literally just wasn't done.
It was purposeful for me. When I became council president, I think that people should see the government in action. I want them to see myself and Lourdes and Remy being friends, but also having deep policy debates on council floor. I think that that is healthy for our community. I think that, that, uh, the idea of, of, uh, bringing forward only unanimous support things, uh, goes into especially, and this was, they, we were doing that back in the day where I think it was even more okay to do, but now there's so much distrust in institutions in general, that, that if that were the case of, it doesn't pass the sniff test.
Right.
And so I don't mind the democratic process, not just don't mind, it's, it's what we're supposed to do.
Right.
Um, is to have a debate. And I mean, now I want to win my arguments and I want to win the votes, uh, and we did.
And you did.
Um, but it wasn't by, you know, but it literally was, it was.
It was a margin of one.
It was on the margin.
Yeah.
Um, but that's okay. Uh, because even the members that voted against it, we still have the same values of making sure that everything that we do, uh, goes back to the benefit of the resident, making sure that things that are done, the big things, still impact everybody, all the little folks throughout the community. We all believe that if, uh, if we invest in something, that people that work there from Columbus should be paid and paid a, a living wage that can support themselves and their family. So they not only can work there, but they can come in fraternize there as well. These are our general beliefs, uh, that this council gets to. Now, does if every piece of legislation get to the threshold for in, 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 any individual council member? That's up to the individual council member. But we, I have leaned in over my time as council president in allowing the process to be seen, so that folks can understand us as individual elected officials, but also so they can understand the values of my collective council, which is about bringing voice to the table, which is, I run basically the gathering spot for Columbus, where we all come together as a community, hash things out, talk about the big shit, and then figure it out together. That is my job. That is city council. It's supposed to be messy.
Yeah.
Democracy. Democracy. We're the legislative branch. We're the, we're, we're the place where you can literally come and come to the microphone and say whatever crazy thing that you want.
And they do.
And they do. But that's, that is their protected and our protected, uh, that is the space to do it. And so I, I enjoy it. I think what has changed over my nine years in office is I've had different roles. Um, as a council member, you know, I had a leader, I had a council president, um, then, um, and I had, you know, and, and, and I was brand new. And so there was leadership given to, to, you know, Mayor Coleman at that point, who it really was a mentor at, at that point, even though I was on council. Then we had a new mayor and I still had a council president, uh, and, and, you know, I played my role as a council president, very focused on the issues that I was working on. I was a public service chair. I love everything to do with mobility and transportation and those issues. So I was very focused on that. Um, uh, and, and I kind of played that role. When I became council president, then I had a different role. I had to then think not just about myself as an individual elected and the things that I personally cared about. I had to think about a body of seven individually elected officials, and to make sure that our collective goals and our collective visions were met. And, 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 and then I think truthfully, um, 2020 changed me again.
Okay.
Uh, where I realized that, you know, especially being the highest ranking African American, um, city government, um, in the time where we were talking about, um, um, historic injustice against black people, um, I couldn't just be even the second person in, in, in voice and leadership at that moment. I had to be the first because I was the, I was the most visible. And, um, it, it was a space that not, that I wasn't, not necessarily that I wasn't comfortable in, but it, it, I had a new responsibility to be fully.
Hmm.
Uh, there.
And vocal.
And vocal.
Yeah.
Had a responsibility, um, and, and, um, and I did my best to meet that.
Yeah.
Uh, and now I think that as we are transitioning, as we're continuing to deal with the, the fallout of the pandemic and what, what does our economy look like? What does our city look like? What do our downtowns look like? What does education look like? Uh, what does the future of our city look like? Uh, I still feel a heightened now responsibility. I'm not a, a brand new council member. I'm not even a brand new council president, uh, any longer. I'm actually getting up there in the realm of the longer serving council presidents. And so I also now feel like I have a greater responsibility to speak, um, when, um, I feel like things need to be said. Um, there's no checking in with, well, I do check in with, uh, six other people.
Yeah.
Which are my, my colleagues, uh, because I also want to make sure that, um, that I am speaking in at least broad enough values that, that encompasses all of us.
Right. Well, and they are your constituents too.
They are my direct constituents.
They elect you.
They are my direct constituents.
Right.
Yes.
Um, let's pivot to the, uh, new districting system. Uh, you keep saying you have, you know, seven, excuse me, six colleagues. You're about to have eight.
Yeah.
Um, how do you feel about the structure of the new districting system? Uh, yeah.
Well, I think that, um, doing the same thing would be easier.
Okay.
Having no change would be much more fun. Uh, we got this. We know how to run a seven per, per person caucus. We know how to all be at large. We kind of like being able to live anywhere we, we want it. But, uh, we've been doing that for 120 years, man. And rightfully so, folks in our community were asking for change. Um, and this is change. It's, it's actually pretty big change. And it's funny because a lot of folks will think, oh, it doesn't go far enough. It's not X, Y, and Z. Um, but there, you know, you, this is an ever-evolving thing, a city, and we have to find the best way to, um, that, that we can, Columbus can, uh, operate itself. And so I think that this is a fair, uh, next step in Columbus's evolution. Um, those folks who are arguing for ward system and true ward system, I am not a believer in ward systems, in true ward systems. Uh, I would go to the tops of the mountains, the depths of the valleys and say, um, a all ward system council, uh, I don't believe in. I don't think that is, is healthy, uh, for getting the larger things done, for advocating and being able to collectively come together in a unified way and say, this is the direction we need to go in as a community. What I do believe in is proximity to people. Um, because I believe when people ask for, uh, we want awards and something like they have in Cleveland, I actually think what they want to know, who in hell represent, who, who in the hell sees this street that has not been paid for, you know, three years? Who, who downtown knew, uh, Bob's Carryout that had been here for 40 years, but that because of kids, you know, robbing them had to shut down last month? Like, who sees that? They want to know that somebody downtown has a personal, real day-to-day connection to their lives.
And do you think constituent services will change much? I've had variable answers to this from current sitting council members.
Yeah. I think, I think that it naturally changes.
Yeah.
Um, I used to talk about, and I still do, but it's funny because I talk about, you know, I don't realize much on polls as I do on my Kroger caucus. Because when I go to Krogers, I am invariably stopped and people tell me how I'm doing. They're asking for things. Well, that actually was a construct of a very specific Krogers on East Main Street. That was my Krogers. And their folks are very vocal and they knew me as an individual, but they also knew who I, what I did downtown.
Right.
And so they used the, and I'm a, I go to Krogers every other day, literally. My husband hates it. Um, so they use that opportunity very, you know, it was, it was a thing.
Right.
Well, now I live in District Nine. I am Far East. Uh, actually still Main Street Krogers, but the farthest Krogers in our city. It's a very different experience, very different conversation, very different people. And so already what I respond to in terms of my day-to-day life as an individual, when I'm in the community, is different than it was when I lived on the Near East Side.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the issues are different. The people are different in terms of the specifics of what they are fighting for or need, uh, in that moment. And I think that will happen all around. Um, there are things that are happening on the far northeast side that, um, you know, that are very specific to a couple of streets over there that they will bump into their representative. Chris Weish will be up there. Uh, he doesn't have an opponent, so I'm very confident he will be elected.
Yeah.
Um, um, he will be their, uh, representative. He will hear things that are specific to that neighborhood that he can then, and will bring downtown. And I think that's healthy.
Um, just so that we address it, you were living before, when the districts were drawn, there were, you and two other council members were living in the same district.
Yep.
One of them has decided to go take another job. One of them is currently running in that district.
Yeah.
You moved.
I did.
Did you move for that?
Um, I think that I, what I assessed was who has the, did I, one, did I still want to serve on city council?
Okay.
That was the first question I had to ask myself. Two, uh, if that, if I answer that question, which was yes, I needed to still serve on council, um, then how were we going to make this work? And who had the ability to? My husband and I had just had our, our child. And, um, truthfully, we loved our house. We love living on, uh, the Near East Side. It felt like we were planning to leave when all the cool things were happening. The Trolley Bar had just opened up, you know, like a little bourbon bar down there. It was just amazing. And yet we were new parents and we were living on Long Street, which was a fast street. And so we were already thinking about, you know, what is, what is a better home for a infant?
Um, is it fair to say it informed your move?
100%.
Okay.
100%. Would I have chosen the farthest east of our city? Maybe not. But we were needing to find a house that was more suitable for a young person.
Can you talk me through the process for how those two, you, it was apparent from a social media perspective, that a choice had been made about who was going to fill those remaining two seats. Sorry, three.
Three.
Uh, who is going to?
Certainly.
These are the, uh, non-incumbent folks running, but that are basically being supported by what we, what, what I think of in, just to myself, and frankly, here at Columbus Underground, we call them the slate.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
How were those folks chosen?
So the political side of us, us as candidates, the folks that were wanting to run for, uh, election for city council, the council members.
Yeah.
Um, we decided as a group that, you know, we weren't going to just leave it up to chance. So much to, of governing is about having, uh, folks with like-minded interest, uh, belief in the big things about who we are as a city and where we should be going, understanding of the housing crisis and what it will take to build more housing, uh, understanding around transportation and transit, understanding about workforce and development, understanding about diversity. And we weren't just going to let, you know, let, let that just happen, happen by a chance. And so in terms of who we wanted to run with.
Right.
And, and that's the big thing that I think is really important. Some folks think, oh, that's really heavy-handed of you guys to pick. But I mean, when a president runs, no one says, oh, I can't believe he picked a vice president.
I can't believe he picked a vice president without, without discussing it with us.
Yeah. And I'm like, what are you guys talking about? This is democracy. What I said is, this is the team that I want to run with.
Yeah.
And we worked hard as a, as a, in, as a council of can, of candidates.
Right.
And I, as an official body, to talk to anybody who would, that we knew that was interested. And, you know, and we started and looked through the Democratic Party. We are Democrats.
Do you think it's fair to point to, in the past, for the most part, but it still does sometimes happen, that the, uh, folks would get reelected, then resign, then there would be an appointment process?
And you know who stopped that?
I, I'm, uh, literally, it's a softball.
You, I, under my leadership, I hate the appointment process.
Well, there's a reason why Mitchell Brown is back on council, right? Because he knew he wasn't gonna run.
And, and I, and that, and I, and we as a caucus made that decision that we are not going to put somebody in that has a, just a, a cakewalk into, you know, that I, it's not that it's unfair. It really is. I, I tried to fundamentally change the, uh, uh, process. And you look around the country around and how the people fill vacancies and you find out they all kind of suck.
Yeah.
And so I, you know.
Do we want to spend much money on special elections? Right.
No, it didn't make sense. And so, but I don't believe in long-term appointments. If we have to do them in the future and I'm still here, I will always advocate for, uh, uh, what's it called? Placeholders.
Okay.
Where put someone in who's a trusted person, who can just govern, uh, until there's a next election, and let's then have somebody run.
Got it.
That, I think that where democracy is in full effect is when folks have options and choice and are able to kick the tires and then make a vote. And us picking about who we wanted to run with still allows everyone to do all of that, to ask the questions, to, to compare them with whoever they're running with, and then to vote for that person or not.
And just to be clear, and I'm assuming this, do you plan on running for council president again?
Yes.
Got it. And that happens at after every election, right?
Uh, every two years. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. And you hope to draw the longest lot, uh, for a term.
I'm sorry. I wish we would have written that in. There's some seniority, like.
Right. Well, Nick Bankston would have been very happy to hear that, but yeah.
Yeah. Did you have to explain to them how that will work?
Yeah. Just we've discussed in a couple of different episodes that after you guys are elected, that the city auditor, no, not auditor.
Clerk.
The city clerk will draw lots.
Yeah.
Uh, that is an incredibly vague term.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't think that's even been properly defined. It's not going to be straws in a hand. It's not going to be a random number generator, but a certain amount of you will be, have a, what a, will some have a six-year term?
Four and two.
Four and two. So half and ha, it'll be.
Five will have a four-year term, four will have a two-year term.
Got it. And so those four will be running right again in '25. So, good luck, Nick Bankston.
Yeah.
Um, I want to be fair about your time, uh, in respect to the other folks. Uh, talk about one big goal.
Yeah.
That you have for the next term. Um, and then I'm going to ask you the same question I ask you every time.
Yeah. So, um, my big goal next term is link us. It's transit, it's transportation. I talk about this often. The, the big issue of our time for the rest of our professional careers and what we will watch our children and grandchildren experience is the growth of our city. We will go from what we are, which is a one million person in the city, two million person in MSA, to a two and a half, two million, two and a half million in city, three million, so, uh, MSA in our lifetime. That will happen. And the thing that, that I, why I think it's so important to focus on this now is, and I've been talking about this, um, Um, metaphor of a tsunami. We have a tsunami of people that are coming to our, to us. And my concern is right now, we're kinda all on the beach frolicking, doing the thing that folks do and there's a tsunami like, oh, the water is actually not even that bad. It's like kinda going out. Not realizing that right past our vision point is a wall. And every day that we don't prepare, every day that we don't get on that boat or build that boat. Uh, that will allow the wave to lift us all is a day closer to the day when we all get wiped out. That our quality of life changes. And so what does that mean? That means that we have to build a transit system that serves everybody. Right now, now I'm gonna, uh, we talk about this all the time. Eighty percent of our community drives single occupancy vehicles to and from to work. A million people, eight hundred thousand cars. If we're gonna add another million people, there's no way that we can add eight hundred thousand more cars. To our community doing the same thing, the same way, without drastically changing the quality of life. We are growing at a pace where overnight, every, every night, forty-four people will come to our community. Every year, we're building, we are creating uh, fifteen or so thousand jobs in our community, but building. Seven to eight thousand units, which means that supply, demand, we are successing ourselves in the failure. Around our housing issue, cause we're bringing more people than we are preparing the housing to incorporate. So we have this amazing opportunity next year to invest in our future through Linkus, which is our communities. Um, uh, investment in mass transit. We get to do what no other community done. I call it the great experiment. Can we do all of these things and do it in a way that really lifts up everybody? Other communities have said, alright, we need to do transit. We'll do one line. We'll do, we'll do a light rail. And uh, they will go to their voters, ask them for four billion dollars to build one line of light rail. Uh, their voters are kinda excited, oh, we're getting a light rail, yay. Um, and then they realize it's one line. Down their business corridor and all the other folks on every different parts of town, like what the fuck does this mean for me? How did this help me get from uh, home to, to daycare to work? We don't have the luxury or the time to build one line of light rail. What we are endeavoring on is building five corridors at the same time, five corridors. It will not be light rail, but it will be something akin to, and I believe better. It'll be bus rapid transit, something that we have never seen here in Columbus. It will have raised platforms. It will have center loading. It will be reliable as light rail at two thirty-two PM, uh, if, at the, you know, Broad and Third Street uh, terminal. It will be there because it's the, it will have a dedicated lane for it's only that thing to be on. And so we don't, again, we don't have time to build one. We're gonna build five at the same time. Uh, and that's what we were funding. The cool thing about it is not just about the transit, it's about the housing and the, the density that will come along it. It's about the life and, and the energy that, that will happen around those five corridors. We have three of those corridors identified now. But hopefully, around the time that this airs around the election or whatever, we should have the other two. We're working on having the other two by the end of the year. Identified. This will be on the ballot next year. Uh, next uh, election, presidential election, we will as a community have a chance to vote for our future. And uh, I will be out um, talking about this any chance I get.
Got it. You've answered this before. Uh, what do you think Columbus is doing well? And what do you think Columbus is not doing so well? I guess I would encourage you to have the least political answer that you could.
Um, I think Columbus is um, starting to feel itself in a new way, in a good way. There, there's a pride that is authentic. I mean, uh, went to a crew game last weekend and was, and I was just like kinda blown away just by how cool we are. You know what I mean? Like, we, we like ourselves. And that is so important. And like, it's dope.
What are we doing not so well?
I still think that we, we don't know yet how much we're about to change. And so we're not preparing for the change, right, as earnestly, as boldly as we need to. And that is scary to me. That it's about to happen to us if we don't, it, it's gonna happen regardless. We can either shape it or not. And I feel like we still are kind of going along.
Shannon, thanks for your time.
It's uh, always a pleasure.
Thank you for listening to the Confluence Cast presented by Columbus Underground. Again, you can get more information on what we discussed today in the show notes for this episode at theconfluencecast.com. Please rate, subscribe, share this episode of the Confluence Cast with your friends, family, contacts, enemies. Your favorite politician. If you're interested in sponsoring the Confluence Cast, get in touch with us. We can be reached by email at info@theconfluencecast.com. Our theme music was composed by Benji Robinson. Our producer is Philip Cogly. I'm your host, Tim Fulton. Have a great week.